Our first stop on our tour route is going to be down to the Housing Authority's redevelopment of Hitch Village. And one of the things I wanted to point out is that the city is going to be extending Oglethorpe Avenue all the way down into their property. So it's going to take, the road kind of shifts there, but the Housing Authority has taken down some properties to allow us to have the right of way we need to extend Oglethorpe, the Boulevard, all the way down into the new housing there. So that's largely affordable housing for, you know, for modest income persons, right at the edge of downtown. So I know one of your oldest concerns the other day is going to be what happens to Yamakra.
Yamakra, yes.
And I think Earlene's made a real clear to a lot of people that she's not planning on releasing that property for just private development. She's planning on coming back with.
She said it was four quadrants and they're going to do an analysis.
Analysis of each, yeah.
What's going to be beneficial.
It may be that they have to develop each separately in separate quadrants. It may not, you know, depend upon what their plan is. But she's been pretty staunch in her support of making sure that, been a lot of developers that have approached people related to their board over the years saying, hey, can you sell this? And she's, no way, you know, we're going to keep that for people of modest means. So. Just past Randy's barbecue, the Housing Authority owns vacant property. And that's where the Early Child Learning Center that was funded by the county and city as a part of the SLOs is going, along with the YMCA that Earlene mentioned.
So that's not the one that's with East Monterey Elementary? Remember when we went over to see that?
No, that's what I was telling you about.
Yeah.
You got the.
So this is something.
You got the.
When did that come about?
The tiny homes over here, which you're familiar with, I take it right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Know about that.
All right. That came about as a part of the last SLOs, so probably in 2018, 19. That was, they were presented with the idea of doing an early child learning center like they have over at Lady Banford Center over here. Two tax credit developments happening here, phase one and phase two by developer named Bill Gross. He started doing Ramona Riley and then moved down here. This is senior housing that's being developed on this property that's just been vacant property for years. So, and this is a $23.6 million development. Again, all the money coming from tax credits and none from the city on this.
We sent you the front door and exit to the rear door.
It's a two-bedroom, two-bathroom house. And you'll notice we put an extra front door on the front of it. This is even before the pandemic hit. We thought that this might be attractive to a young person that might have a home office or something. That way they could use that front bedroom as an office. People could enter the office, there's a bathroom off the office that they could utilize without ever coming into the living part of the house. And we weren't sure whether that would be very popular, but Anita, I think, has had a great level of interest in that feature going forward. So anyways, you're welcome to take a look around if you'd like.
Let's keep everybody just for 20 seconds, Mayor. We thank you for doing this. There's nothing like seeing things in person. The task force will be reporting in June or July. And that was the reason that we had the Housing Authority, which has often been an anchor or not an anchor, a detriment, and now they are an anchor and an asset, so that we've explained what they've done. This is to explain how housing finance and planning and neighborhood engagement has worked. This wasn't our first project, but I think it was one of the most difficult because the Garden Homes project was really HUD-funded. Where's Earlene? I mean, essentially, Earlene, didn't they, when we did Garden Homes, I won't say they wrote a check, but they wrote a substantial check. The HUD did.
Eleven million.
Yeah. But then, which was the days of the Olympics and New Orleans, then they lost some of their enthusiasm for writing big checks. However, we still have HUD, we still have tax credits, we still have private and nonprofit investment, we still have, you know, families putting in money, contractors, especially minority contractors. It all fits together. So that the purpose of this tour was to explain how finance works in the big picture for these kind of projects and for the householder, because it's all about the gap. How do you, how do you make people, how do you help them get affordable housing when they can't afford a market rate? So we're trying to close that market rate gap. We do it with HUD money, we do it with SLOs money, we do it with low-income housing tax credits, and all the different tax credit products. We put that plan together and then we close these gaps. And to the city's credit, in 2020, we helped close the gap on, and it's in your fact sheet, 704 units in 2020 alone. That's astounding to me.
A bit of a pain.
Yeah. Because I remember in the mayorwood, when I sat with Henry Moore in Mendenham's office, we had no money, we had no plan, and we had a gigantic set of derelict structures and a whole lot of families in need. We still have those kinds of issues, but we now have these mechanisms. So I appreciate you being here. And what Martin is going to do is to walk you through how this works, including a unit like this, which will help lower costs and get people into really good units with nice features at the lowest possible market rate. So there you go.
I have a question.
Yes?
This particular unit, if someone wanted to purchase it?
Yes.
How much would something like this cost?
Anita. Anita's a developer of this unit, of this house, and she's actually already sold it. The question was, is how much is this house selling for?
The house is selling for $140. But however, the cost of development to develop a house is about $155. So you can see it costs more to develop a house than what it's being sold for.
The gap, right?
Yes. And so the buyer is also receiving down payment assistance. And so they're able to utilize the Dreammaker's program to how close that gap to meet the payment, a payment that they could afford.
The cost of development of a house like this, as we'll see often, right now, it's probably about $175,000, $180,000. Construction costs have gone up $20 a square foot in the last year. That's even with our most economical builder, Mr. Dasher. Now, he went from $112, now to $132. National Home Builders Association has said that material, material costs for some building materials have gone up as much as 180% in a year. House costs have gone up 20,000 to 30,000. Appraised values are sometimes not keeping pace with the cost of development. And that's what Anita was talking about, is that you might have, like on Cumming Street or here, a house that costs more to develop than you can sell it for because the appraisals haven't caught up with the development cost. So there's a development subsidy, and we use our Dreammaker money to write down the cost of the house from that $155 to the $140. And then we also use our Dreammaker money to help provide a second mortgage financing, zero percent interest, no payments for 30 years. And that might be for 20% of the sales price of the house. So if it's sold for $140, it might be a, you know, $20,000, $25,000 second mortgage, which means that the customer borrowing the house is only having to borrow, you know, 100 and, I'll do the math, it's getting hot, but 140 minus 25, 115,000 bucks, which most of our customers can afford, $115,000 to $130,000 mortgage. But they can't afford more than that. So we have two different ways to help them. One is in down payment assistance or gap financing that's a zero percent, no payments, 30 years, so long as they continue to own and occupy the house. If they sell the house, we get our money back. And then the other way we.
Participate in the cash, you might say.
Yeah. So then the other means is we just write the cost of the house from the development cost down to the appraised value. We can't write it down any lower, HUD doesn't allow that, so you can go down to the appraised value. So, and this house would have been using Savannah Affordable Housing Fund money for construction and home money, so it's a mixture of things. We try to finance on these houses, you know, $90,000 where we can. We get our money back when the house sells and the permanent financing comes into place. Some of that money goes back into the permanent financing, but some of it comes back to us so we can continue to do what we're doing.
So better. Yeah. So if you would, so Martin did a great job with the booklet, I think with the tour, but please, look at your cheat sheet here. It tells you about the number of units, how much money's gone into the units, who's living in the units, who's building the units, essentially the complete picture of what has to be done to produce a quality unit like this. And then why don't you guys tell us about how, you know, like, sell us on the house? I think it looks pretty good to me, but what is in the house?
Well, you can see the features that when someone move into the property, it's moving ready. Has the blinds, has the ceiling fans where they don't have to invest in that. We've put washer and dryer units in the homes as well, so it's best in the closet, they get all the appliances. And so the biggest challenge for our families is not being able to afford a mortgage, is being able to find a house that they can move in and not incur those additional fees or costs that comes with it. So they can basically just move in and don't have to worry about putting up sheets over the window. Just move their furniture in or the minimum and be able to move forward with it. So when you walk through the house, it's not 100% complete, but it's 97% complete, and you'll be able to see the features in regard to the flooring, vinyl flooring, durable, easy clean, easy maintenance. When you look outside the home, you notice when you walk in, you see the fiber and decking. We try to use quality material so that the homeowners won't have a lot of deferred maintenance. But we also stress to them that you're no longer a tenant.
That's right.
It's your responsibility to maintain your home, which includes the way that their property looks.
Fixing the toilet, that sort of.
Exactly, right. Right. They get a one-year warranty, just like all other buildings, where we'll come in and repair or if there's a defect, but wear and tear, that's on me.
What we're trying to do right now, too, with the modular housing piece, is we're trying to compare, working with Mr. Dasher, compare the construction costs there is on a stick-built, fully stick-built house versus the cost of ordering a house that 80% is completed in the factory and the other 20% is completed on-site, to see what the cost difference is. We think there is a savings. We quite honestly think that if we could figure out how to do a plant here, somewhere down the road, and it was a nonprofit-owned and operated plant, some of the money that would go into any business's profit could be used to reduce the cost of the house further, or it could come into the Savannah Affordable Housing Fund if we were generating revenue through the sale of housing. Before we get too much further, there are a couple of people I do want to introduce that hiding behind the city manager, perhaps. This is Matt Calamari, and he actually is the owner of the Highline Structures, which is the modular housing plant in Baxley, Georgia. I think you opened your doors about a year, year and a half ago. Like everybody, you hit the pandemic and there's been all sorts of challenges that you've had with getting materials and, you know, cost of materials going up. So Matt is working with Anita, has been working very carefully with her through this process. Mr. Dasher is working with her to provide costs and what it takes him to do, you know, the foundation and to hook the house up and all that. So at the end of the day, we'll actually be able to compare and see. If everything goes as we think it will, I think Anita's looking to get four more houses from Matt to go on these lots that are just out to our north. And so Matt, do you want to say anything about your operation and how modular works? It's stick-built in a factory, as we.
Sure. Thank you for the introduction and thanks to both Anita and Martin for having me here for the set and meeting all of you. So Modular's been around for a long time, but it's really starting to take form. It's admittedly had some prejudice against it, and we're working to combat that at every turn. It's, while it's built in the factory, we build to IBC IRC standards, it's just brought here on a truck.
There's one pulling in right now.
There is one coming, the last, the last four boxes.
Oh, thank you, right.
The four boxes of reverse, too. And so I'm really thankful to Anita and for Martin for the opportunity to provide affordable housing. For Savannah, it's amazing to see what Savannah is doing in the portable housing space. We got into this business, while we are a for-profit business, we're really trying to target that missing middle. We think we can do that for profit and make a big impact in various markets, because every market is having the same issues, displacement and lack of affordable housing. And as we think, we think modular, while stick building will always be around, of course, we think modular is really going to be a huge impact and a huge percentage of the future of building affordable housing. The construction market, subcontractors, the average age of the framers in the low 50s, and those workers are just not being replaced. So we've got to look elsewhere.
So there's still a lot of work for the contractor to do, but it helps ensure, I think, an equally good, if not better, product because it's built in a controlled environment. You're not waiting on subcontractors because everybody's on the assembly line, learning a skill and doing the job. So I think to Matt's point, we're seeing that right now, too. The younger generation is not, you know, they don't want to get dirt under their fingernails. They'd rather be on a keyboard making money that way. But if we can train people, or he can in his shop, how to construct in a controlled environment, if we were able to do that here in a few years, if we were fortunate enough, I think that would be training the next generation of builders and contractors.
One of the things that Martin has is an architectural knowledge, so that when we build a house here, it has the features that are in Savannah neighborhoods, the floor plan, the porch.
And I think on the modular houses, are you going with the vinyl wood-like floor throughout the whole house, correct? Which, again, carpet is inexpensive to put in, this flooring is more expensive than carpet, but we think durability-wise, it's going to last a whole.
All the appliances and this flooring is better than I have.
This house is two-bedroom, two-bath, because this lot was short, so we couldn't get, the rest of our three bedrooms, two baths.
Are we expecting the price of materials to go down? Are we planning on riding it out, hoping it does, or we just keep them and pushing through?
If you find the answer, I'm going to make a big bet on it.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I mean, something's got to give over time, but right now, it's just.
And the lumber is really.
It's everything. It's lumber is hitting the headlines, but it's really everything. And availability, scarcity is becoming a big issue. But something's got to give, you know, it's good news that demand is high still, and we'll just navigate the waters the best we can.
Well, the interest rates being so low is part of what's helping that out, but it's kind of a perfect storm. Interest rates low, material costs going up, people can still afford, but our people can't. You know, that's where we have to come in with that write-down and where we have to come in with substantial second mortgage financing. I've heard in council meetings before, you or somebody else, $170,000, that's not affordable housing. Well, right now, the average price of a house, median price of a house in Savannah is 250,000, I think. So it's, you're right, it's not affordable to our customer, but how it gets affordable is by us providing a $50,000 zero-interest second mortgage loan, no payments for 30 years. Now that person only is having to borrow 120,000 from the bank, now it becomes affordable. So that's, I mean, it's, there's no way, I mean, we can try to reduce costs, and I looked 50-year, something I looked up online, over the last 50 years, housing prices, when they've gone up, have only come down twice in that 50-year period. So I suspect that it's going to be hard. If it does come down, it may not come back down to the levels that we were used to looking at, so. This is Ashley Midtown, used to be Garden Homes.
Right.
The city used infrastructure money to pull all the streets from Ben Clark all the way through. It used to be one-way in and one-way out.
Right.
And this is a city square in the middle of it. So, and we.
I can open this community, I can say.
And we told the Housing Authority, we had provided the infrastructure.
Look at that park, that gets money out there.
So we told the Housing Authority we would participate, but they had to do housing that was on a scale, not apartment buildings, but on a scale of single-family, you know, one, two-family detached, three-family detached. All right, sorry.
Mercy Housing was founded by Sisters of Mercy about 40 years ago in Omaha, Nebraska. And they were sisters working in legal aid and healthcare. And they really found that the people they were working with weren't advancing in the ways that they would want them to without having stable housing. And as a result, they founded Mercy Housing and really, through their will and skill, grew it, and it's become the largest nonprofit affordable housing provider in the country. We create service-enriched affordable housing for low-income families, and we hope that that stable housing can really inspire the dreams of families and seniors who live here. And we also have resident services, some of whom you've met, who really connect residents with external resources to really give them the confidence and a chance to achieve those dreams. So Mercy Housing Southeast has been working here in Savannah for over 20 years. Our earliest developments were in the Kyler Brownville neighborhood, and we were really invited to work in Savannah by Sisters of Mercy who were here. And so there was a connection both to the history and mission of the organization. In Kyler Brownville, one of my favorite developments is a redevelopment of the first black teaching hospital in Georgia called Charity Hospital. It's an adaptive reuse that is now housing for families, affordable housing for families, and is still operated as such. So we have really enjoyed our partnership with the city of Savannah. You know, the city really understands how to engage in a public-private partnership, and they've been successful at that for many years. And they've known the kind of long-term partnership and political will and commitment that it takes to create a revitalization project like this. A philosophy that we have at Mercy Housing is, would we want our mother to live there? Would we want our brother to live there, our sister to live there? And Savannah Gardens surpasses that test. There is a limit to the incomes that families or seniors can have to live in Savannah Gardens. So there's usually a check about how much money people make on an annual basis. And then we'll take that and try to ensure that people are paying roughly about 30% of their income towards rent so that it is affordable. We find that many of the families who work here work in the service economy, work in the tourism economy, they're really essential workers that make the city function and work and need a place to live that's near their jobs. So in terms of where people work, that's where a lot of people have employment. There are also seniors who live here and in some properties that we own around the city of Savannah. And a lot of people are on fixed income, they're in retirement. There are others who are still working, might work in the grocery store, might have a part-time job, but still need a stable place to live. In order to make sure that the people who made this city successful, the people who are essential workers who are here, the people who, you know, are post-retirement, have the ability to stay, that affordable housing is going to be needed, and more of it is going to be needed. So I think the kind of public-private partnership that the city has engaged in at Savannah Gardens and in Kyler Brownville is going to need to be replicated and going to need to be scaled up. And I know that the city is really focused on that. Today, there's over 450 apartments that are here and also a number of single-family housing units for people to buy. And there's been, you know, a number of people who have come from the rental housing and purchased for-sale housing in this community. So for Mercy Housing, it's really been about helping the city to implement its vision from a long time ago. And we've been happy to be really nested in a lot of the infrastructure that the city has put in around the housing. The streets, the parks, the splash pad, the schools, the park center have really created, you know, not just housing, but more of a comprehensive community and revitalization.
This is a Midtown neighborhood. This neighborhood is gentrifying because people are coming in and buying property at tax sales or speculating. We're going to look at some properties very quickly around the corner and show you how that works. These two houses, similar houses to this a couple blocks away, have sold two-bedroom, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath houses, about 1,600, 1,700 square feet, are selling for between $250,000 and $350,000. That's unheard of, and that's making it hard for people who lived in this neighborhood. Now, the good thing is, is if you lived in this neighborhood and you were African-American and owned property, your properties were something else. So if you're the heir, you can sell it and make a ton of money. When I came here 20 years ago, you could buy a 30-foot lot for $1,500 over here. Now they're selling for $30,000, $40,000, and $50,000, and they're selling for, you know.
And 30-foot lots were, right, Bernetta? 30-foot lots, we got to make sure that doesn't harm things.
I think we have to do a better job explaining to our general populace about what the gentrification actually is.
Right.
Because some people think it's a function of the city somehow or another, whereas we're a more functional market.
That's right.
And so I think we have to explain that to people, that, you know, when you have grandma's house and you sell grandma's house for much less. I get these phone calls all the time, somebody say, well, would you like to sell your property? Then you ask them how much? And it's way less than it's worth.
Exactly.
But people will do it to get the money.
That's right.
And then they fix it up with money they think they'll fix it up with, and then that's what happens.
That's right. So I don't know. Mayor, let's do that as a supplement to show how that actually can be. Earlier that we get involved, the more that we can combat that from happening. So what I wanted to, though, ratify and thank James, because he said he couldn't have done it without us. We could not have done it without Mercy. The Sisters, actually at St. Joe, as they changed their mission from healthcare management, they changed it to the same mission but in housing. And thank God for Savannah, because they have been our partner. As he would tell you, they're not getting rich, but they're getting wealthy in terms of making differences. I can remember riding through these neighborhoods, you know, 20, 30 years ago and see blighted block after block. We still have our challenges, but I think if we take what James talked about, which is the partnership, land infusion of capital and infrastructure, helping to close the financial gaps, and planning with residents, that we can continue to be transformational. I know that's true. So go ahead.
We're running out of time. We got to get to Cumming Street, but this is, in your booklet, you'll see an update on 1K and 10. And we go through a thorough analysis in a neighborhood identifying where the, you know, activities of crime, hotspots, heat maps, the condition of the property. We actually come out and look at properties and document their history, code enforcement's got that. We look at tax records, we look at ownership. And just this morning, preparing for this trip, I knew we were going to do this, but look at this beautiful house over here. Somebody obviously bought that and cares about it, and look what they're looking at year-round. It turns out that this property, this property, and I'm not going to get it too wrong, but this lot, a lot on the other side of this house, and the two-story house in this, they were bought going back to 2002 and flipped by the same kind of people over and over again. And the one lady still owns this lot and a lot behind it. She sold that house over there eventually, and somebody's renovating it. Now, the gentleman that owns this house, it's her property. His mom died in 2006. He's not keeping the property up, and it isn't doing anybody any good over here, but he hadn't got clear title to it, this room.
That's where the enemy's main becomes.
Well, and this is, this is what our commitment to you and everybody else on this thing is that through 1K and 10, whether we buy a property, we're going to go to the tax sales and we're going to compete for those properties, because if we don't, the guy over there will, and he'll get them. So we're going to go with our land bank and we're going to compete for those properties if we have to.
I'm glad you said that, because I was going to ask that question. I saw the lady, the director of the land bank, she was out at the tax sale, and she was outbidding everybody else, and I was like, what the heck?
One reason why she was doing that is because the county will put a tax, like, this property right here has got $188 in back taxes to the county. But he hadn't paid his taxes since 2010 to us, so he's got like $1,500 owing the city. Well, when the county does a tax sale, they just advertise it for what they're owed, not what we're owed. So Allison goes there, and if it's a property we're interested in, she bids that sucker up, so that if somebody does get it, they're paying the city the money. up so that if somebody does get it, they're paying the city the money back that the cities do. We really want to get the property, but sometimes we can't, can't get it. So, but the bottom line is, let, let me just, as an example, if this thing sold at a tax sale for four thousand dollars, okay, the heir to this property would pay the three thousand dollars or two thousand dollars in back taxes, then he could come and claim the two thousand bucks. That's all he gets. If we buy this property through eminent domain, we gotta pay fair value, appraised value into the court. On Cumming Street, there was nothing less than twenty thousand bucks, I think, that would appraise that, even though it was in a bad or worse condition than that. So the heir can go into the court and claim their share of it. What we, what we're committed to doing, whether it's a tax sale that the land bank gets or whether it's something we buy with eminent domain, is to, if it's eminent domain, we gotta come back to you guys and ask and transfer it to the land bank. They got more flexibility in selling property than we do. So we can give a legitimate heir of that property, an opportunity to buy that property back for what we have invested in it for six months. Let's say, give them first priority. We can work with them on trying to finance the development of that house and the renovation of it. Uh, what we found on Cumming Street, except for one family and it was, everybody else was just happy to be able to claim their share of their inheritance that they never expected to get. But if they, going forward, what we've committed to doing is giving six months after the land bank gets it, trying to reach out to the heirs and we know who they are because of using eminent domain, you gotta know who the heirs are. We'll reach out to the heirs and give them a chance to buy the property back, give them a chance to finance, I mean, we can finance it.
I thought it was a year and a day. Is it different?
No, no.
Or is the land bank that's getting it?
No, no, here's, on eminent domain, it's as soon as you go through the court system, you get clear title. So when the, when the heir buys a property back from us, now they got something. They got, you know, they had to pay us what we had invested in to get the title cleared, but they now have a property they can do something with. The year and a day thing is on the normal tax sale? What happens if, if somebody goes down here and, and offers ten thousand dollars for this property, cause it's valued, valuable to him? He's gotta wait a year and a day before he can file a borrow redemption. That heir can come in and pay him ten thousand dollars or pay ten thousand dollars to the county any time of that year and reclaim the property. But not only does he pay the ten thousand, he's gotta pay a twenty percent penalty. So now he's actually paying twelve thousand dollars to get his property back. And what does he get? Nothing, because it doesn't have clear title. So he's just, he's, he's keeping it in the family name, but there's nothing he can do with it. And, you know, we worked with Bill Broker, who I'm sure you all are familiar with. He, Bill has even called me up and says, "Martin, I got a customer here. Can you use eminent domain on his property? He's willing to do it because he can't get all the heirs together. They're, they're scattered across the, the country, doesn't know whether they're living or dead, he just can't." So anyway, it's interesting, this little, this little microcosm here, this is an heir's property, this, these three properties here, two going back this way and this, this is owned by somebody that bought this stuff back in two thousand and two or four or six or something, and they just keep, they flipping it to one another for some reason, probably to stay ahead of code enforcement. And, and who knows what they're gonna do, but they're not doing anything to the property and it'll eventually be dumped on. And then the taxpayers, money that you could be spending on something else, we gotta come out here and cut this grass three or four times a year, bill them and then we got, uh, so anyway, if we turn the corner here and take a left, whenever we survey a neighborhood for 1K and 10, you'll see in your packet, there's an inspection sheet that we do and we're not inspectors, but we say, "Okay, this is what we think of the code violation" and make code enforcement aware of that. So they should, okay, if you can pause here, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna turn left to get out of here, but look at this house over here. Uh, this, this property is, uh, again, it's, it's been out there for years with nothing happening to it, the back half of it's blown off. This house was bought in two thousand and nineteen by an investor. That house was bought by an investor back in, out in two thousand and six. And this property over here, I believe is, uh, uh, there was a house on it that property maintenance just tore down.
The builder's went there.
Yeah, well, that, that was, uh, that, that property is again, investment property. So people are out here buying this stuff, knowing that it has value, but they're not doing anything with it because they can, they know if they wait long enough, they can sell it to somebody who's gonna pay them a ton of money for it.
Since blight is a critical issue, let me go through what our team is talking about, Mayor. I would ride these neighborhoods between seven-thirty and eight. I would make my list and then Taphany would have her list and Israel. And then we would circle around and then we would get the aldermen in some cases. So we would say, "Okay, now what about that house? What about that house? What's the problem? What's holding it up? What can we do to get it broken loose?" And I, and I think, Mayor, when we talk about blight, blight is a one-on-one, lot-on-lot problem. And I think as we get out of COVID, then let's get back to that process of knowing every. I could, I would ride with Israel and he could tell me about every single lot or I'd ride with, and that's where I think we're gonna be headed as we get out of this mess.
There's a house right here, oh my, in a, okay, this is here, you see that? Yeah, this is where my friend left me.
Yeah. And that, and that, how big is that lot, Martin?
Thirty-five.
Yeah, see, so I, I'm afraid, Mayor, that some of these, you know, let's, don't be too, uh, resolute in saying, "We gotta have a fifty-foot lot." I mean, it all depends on what works. That's right. It depends on what works. We do. No, no, I, I, I mean, what, why would we make, be making an improvement by making lots not developable when they could be? Now, I'm not saying every lot is, but you know, that, you need to be able to redevelop those lots and, and don't make it not developable just because of some rule.
Well, it's the quality design and materials used on the house, that's the key thing. So we take it right here. So the next one, we're gonna pass to Sisters Court. Part of what we wanted to do is show you the tax credit deals, they're scattered throughout the city and they're, they're in neighborhoods that are gentrifying.
One of the things that I think that you asked, Alicia, was about these, uh, what tax credit projects did we have and where are they now? So I think in your booklet or else with your handout is a complete listing of where we had tax credits and most of them still exist today. You know, the, the SNAP, uh, you, you look at it in the list, cause it is correct. We better keep our eye on it, otherwise they go away. And, and especially in these neighborhoods, you know, gentrification has that double problem of not only raising costs, but that means people who live there can't stay. But if you can re-up the, uh, the tax credits, well, then you can continue to have, you know, affordability. Sisters Court, you know, uh, uh, Mayor Floyd and I stood out here one night, I forget when it was, but Sisters Court had burned. And we're looking at, "Oh my God, how are we ever gonna be able to do this project?" And yet, you go in these things, oh, they, they got tall ceilings, they're, they're not big, but they got really nice kitchens and they're, they're, they're fabulous inside.
Sisters Court is coming up right now.
Yeah, this is Sisters Court.
It used to be Model Cities.
Right.
Remember that back in the day?
So they built a wing to add units. The chapel is still there and the units are fabulous. You can't get units like that now. The chapel's back there.
So wait a minute, this is now housing?
Yes, Sisters Court. Affordable housing for seniors. Seniors, senior housing. Yeah, this out parcel, that's right, yeah. So the chapel is a community room and the, uh, how many units are in there, Martin? It's in the list.
Seventy.
Seventy, yeah. Yeah, that's right, exactly, yeah.
And African-American museum, I mean, um.
The, the art museum is, is here.
Right there. Yeah, I used to go to Model Cities.
Yep.
And you know what?
The Delaware Center and all, yes.
Model Cities was one of the best.
Oh, I know, Otis worked in it, yeah.
So how can we bring something like?
Well, that's a good question. How do we get back to that point?
Yes.
So we're gonna turn north on Drayton. We're gonna go by the property seventeen. Yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna go past, uh, seventeen-hundred Drayton, which is a property that you all agreed to sell to, uh, a developer a few months ago. I understand from talking to them, they're gonna put their tax credit application in here this month. They probably won't get funded this year, sometimes it takes two rounds unless you're experienced like James with the, the DCA. But the interesting thing is when you go by this vacant parking lot, it's gonna be housing, I think it's forty apartments. The stuff on the other side.
Right here.
Yeah, slow down, slow down, slow down. Yeah, right here, this side. But when you, when you look at the housing buildup here on the corner, that's the kind of stuff that's going right now.
It's market, right?
Yeah, yeah, and that's going for probably two thousand dollars, a, a one-bedroom apartment, twenty-five-hundred and two-bedroom compared to what.
Is it church building?
No, no, it's private.
Private?
Yeah.